Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by advertising such notice in the home news Tribune, the Board Office, the schools, and on cable, finishing Channel 118, Verizon Files, Channel 24, and by filing such notice with the Township Clerk. This meeting is scheduled for today, Tuesday, March 11, 2014. The Board will take action on the statement of bills.
The Old Bridge Township Board of Education acknowledges that the law of this state establishes that members of the public, including members of the Board, have the right to report public home meetings using audio or video recording devices, providing that the act of reporting will not interfere with the business of the public home meetings. Therefore, the Board makes it known that any such reporting should be considered private reporting of the individual, and in no manner represents the official record of this Board. The Board therefore takes no responsibility for such reporting, so it should private reporting and legally disavows any future use.
Rock, roll.
Rossili. Prima. Dunn. Here. Hopman. Monten. Singh. Swil. Weber. Andriani. Morris.
Plaid of allegiance, everyone? Please rise.
In the light of the United States of America, in a true republic, where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
At the Board of Education meeting, we have two memorials to read. One is for Juninoga, retired secretary and retired nurse Mildred Fletcher.
Do we have those parents?
Ordinarily not, but we scored seven of them. Is somebody playing the tape machine?
High school parent.
I don't remember the person.
That would be a DCA image perhaps, if that were.
Sucks getting that many years.
Code of Ethics would be read by Mr. Weber during a regular meeting. May I have the motion to approve the minutes?
Absolutely.
We're not approving any minutes. Next week. We have recognition, one, two, and three.
Ms. Kibler, Mr. Salantana told me that there was, uh, somebody came across my desk for recognition that I, uh, I put on the April agenda, he said you wanted on this one?
Yes, it was the, um, Els American Essay Contest recipients. They're going to be here to do that, and they're also going to be presenting us with a check to support our Hope Foundation Not Our Drugs Elementary Program, which is in cooperation with the Ais School Alliance. So we thought we would try and do all, both of those things that were needed, and the representative would be here from the Els. If you want to change, I can simply have it changed.
Um, it's a pretty light agenda, so, yeah, just to make sure Ms. Tori gets the information.
I believe she had it at some point.
Okay, so the Board can expect one more recognition by Els Essay Contest, what?
And also the, um, the motion to accept the donation for the Els. I'm just not clear on the amount as to what it will be, but they figured they would do it both in one, okay?
Sure.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I would like just to read the Code of Ethics.
At this meeting?
Yes.
Be my guest.
Because it stems into our budget process, and I want to just reiterate where the Board members should stand. Every Board member will make decisions in terms of the education of our children, and seek to help maintain public schools that meet the individual needs of all children, regardless of their ability, race, creed, sex, or social standing.
Thank you for reading that into the letter.
You're welcome, Mr. President.
And you will know that, um, just remember from how what we treat one of our goals was definitely having educational opportunities for all of our children. So thank you for pointing that out. We will have that read again, Mr. Weber, if I volunteered to do that, I need to be prepared that.
When I said he volunteered, it wasn't when he said he didn't volunteer, but I reminded him of a word the USA made up, volunteer.
Volunteer.
Volunteer whole.
Well, it was his idea. He said it was a great idea. It was all right.
Well, we can rotate each Board member. We do have nine Board members.
That's fair too. I don't think that that would be an issue if anybody wants to volunteer. We'll take a quick straw poll at the beginning of the meeting, we'll start alphabetically, and if you want to pass, you pass. Kevin?
Yes.
You're the B after my A. Would you like to see the Els Code of Ethics next week? You can say no.
Sure.
Okay, Kevin is up. Thank you, Mr. Ross.
Anytime.
Kevin, you're walking.
No, it's because alphabetically you're on the list. And Mr. Kibler, you'll be next after him. All right. All right. What?
It's, I'll share that later.
Never mind. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, Superintendent's Report, anything of greater note than usual, sir?
Um, nothing of greater than usual, and we're just going to roll the answer progress to four.
Okay. Dr. Hoker, RTI. Ladies and gentlemen, Dr. Hoker has a short presentation for the Board members and the public, because they're here. And you need to move. No, you're, okay. Well, I know, I'm in the camera way. Get out of the way. No, camera way.
I was asked to make a presentation to the Board regarding response to intervention, just to explain exactly what this program is and what the district is looking for. This is an avenue to work towards meeting our district goals. So part of tonight's presentation is to give you an introduction to RTI, explain the three tiers of intervention, give you some information on what to do when students do not respond to intuitive interventions, and what we are looking for as far as requirements to implement the program. Response to intervention is the practice of providing highly qual, high-quality targeted instruction to meet specific student needs. It is a general education program. It is an approach that includes all students. So we are primarily looking at general education interventions for all students, whether they are special education, struggling learner, an advanced learner, what modifications and accommodations can we make in the classroom. Core principles of RTI, we can effectively teach all children, and you'll note the picture on the top, where two children coming from the same family can have very different motivational factors when it comes to school. So you have one child there, and I can speak from experience, these aren't in fact my children. One of them looks like this in the morning when they're ready to go to school, with their head down on the counter, and the other one that's bright and cheering. So, however, they can all learn. Core principles of RTI, early intervention is key. We will primarily focus on K1 and 2 interventions, using a multi-tiered model, specifically based on student need, using problem solving to make decisions, and research-based scientifically sound instruction and interventions. Progress will be documented, monitored consistently, and overall, we're using the data to make decisions to inform instruction.
You're on camera, otherwise you're just a voice.
Oh. So there are three tiers of intervention. Tier one focuses on the general class population. The interventions provided can help all students, and they can be provided in whole group or individual, small group. Tier two, you would work and focus on a smaller population that has greater needs. These students would receive, again, targeted interventions that are monitored more frequently. And then tier three are students who are significantly struggling learners or have significant academic needs, and these children and these interventions would be documented and monitored more frequently. The RTI itself, again, it's, there's, this is a work in progress, and there are school districts that have RTI in place, that many of them are, when they first started the program, they got in the first year through tier one interventions, and it's, it requires a lot of professional development for regular classroom teachers. So once implemented, we would move through these tiers and provide them with greater consistency, with greater monitoring. There's a special education component and collaboration. Special education eligibility teams would review the documented tiered interventions to determine if, and we're calling it an intervention audit, to determine if there are any instructional explanations for our struggling learners. And this is to rule out whether they would need an evaluation or further assistance from, from special education. It's also the collaboration with the special education department would increase the collaboration between regular education staff and special education staff. Our special education teachers have significant training in intervention, and they often don't have an opportunity to be in the classroom with the regular education teachers. The more that we implement in-class resource, and lack of the word, the more opportunity our regular classroom teachers have to collaborate with the special education experts, and a lot of their interventions in education can help us in the regular classroom with the struggling learners that don't fit into the special education category. Before we get to this, I asked Dr. Tui if he could share some of our statistics and data regarding the referrals to special education.
I don't have any PowerPoint selection. Just very quickly, I just have a couple copies here. I have to apologize, if you can pass this around. Um, so there's, there's two just general graphs here. These are basically the referral numbers for 2012, 2013. A special education referral is when a parent and IRS principal ends up referring a special education, or a student who they think might end up having special needs, a need for special education services, to acquire the special services from which we have to do a evaluation of that student. So on the bottom, the bottom graph is the total number of referrals during the course of the 2012, 2013 school year, from Ju, uh, July of 2012 until June of 2013. That is the entire year. So just a general summary of those numbers, in grades one, two, and three, you really do end up having the largest percentage of students who are referred, as well as in grade four. For the second part of that chart on the bottom, in terms of the total number of referrals for this current school year, from July of 2013 until what would be January of 2014, we have already gone over the total amount of kindergarten referrals that we had all of last year. We are almost equal to the number of first grade referrals, and in terms of second, third, and fourth grade referrals, they are on a similar trend to what has been presented in years past, is that many of our students, from when they are kindergarten age through grade three, are the ones who eventually are referred, classified, at which point the goal of this position, and Dr. Hoker and Mr. Vino, how they're really crafting this position, is to end up providing these targeted interventions to grades one, two, and three, to ensure the students are getting what they need prior to being referred, and that's why the tier, especially tier two and tier three interventions. Tier two is really what we, as a district, do already in terms of basic skills, by providing small group instruction, pulling students out, giving them targeted instructions. But tier three really would be the most important, where they would be specifically targeted on skills that they individually need, and therefore it could avoid a potential referral. One of the things that we see most, especially with third graders, if a student struggles with learning in grade one, that is continued in grade two, and by grade three, whether it's through reading assessment, or some of those other assessments, they are, they have a lot of difficulty specifically with reading and writing. A lot of our students are classified SLV, or specific learning disabled, in grade threes, because they have such a difficulty with writing, and if we can avoid that by putting in these tier instructions, which would be guided by this prospective position, it would be very helpful for the district as a whole to avoid a lot of the referrals that we currently do see. And if you can see the top graph, again, it's not perfect, because I couldn't figure out how to get the numbers off the bottom, but really that first where it says one, that's actually kindergarten, and then it goes, two is actually first grade, three is actually second grade, so if you take one number off, each of the numbers on the bottom is actually the actual grade. But if you notice, just a trend, you have a rise in referrals from the beginning, which peaks right now, is in the district, in grade two, and then it moves slowly downwards. Grade two is really an area that we have a major concern with, and obviously it goes down all the way to grade eight, where we do end up having less referrals, but more students who are classified, because by then, there are some hidden things behind in terms of their academic.
Thank you. Dr. Tui referred to a position when he was speaking, and I kind of left that out, wanted to leave that to the end, so that I could give you an indication as to what RTI is first. We do need to add a position in order to implement RTI, which is what I'll explain in just a minute. But we currently have academic support teachers and educational advancement teachers providing interventions to our struggling learners. It's the consensus of administration and many of our administrators and staff out in the district that we need to provide something in addition. The programs that we, the services that we're providing now are okay, but we do, we can do better. We can provide more targeted interventions to meet individual needs of students, and as I said in the beginning, it emphasizes the need to help the struggling learner. But these interventions can also help the student who is a challenged student or has a behavioral concern. The interventions can help all of the children. With that being said, we need, we need a supervisor to monitor and implement this program. RTI, again, is a concept. It is a, has to be, a plan has to be created for the individual district. We can't go to another district and say, what did you do to implement RTI and bring it to Old Bridge, and say, we'll do exactly the same thing. Old Bridge is unique. We have, we're a large school district, we have 12 elementary schools that all have their own personality and their own needs, and I've worked in several of them, so I can, I can tell you firsthand that there are differences within our elementary schools, within the needs of the students in our elementary schools. And we need a specific approach for Old Bridge. So what I'm asking for your consideration is to create a position, a supervisory position, for 10 months to, the supervisor would be responsible for developing the plan, for implementing the plan, beginning in September 2014. They would be responsible for establishing the professional development for all staff. They would be, and that's including power professionals, classroom teachers, administrators, everyone needs to be working using the same tools. Provide coaching services to staff and to parents of those students who need the additional support. They would be responsible for monitoring the progress, guiding the teachers through each level of intervention. And in year two, another part of the responsibility would be to assist with the process of the NCLV grant. Something that's included here is, you know, working with Dr. Ferry, we were able to come up with Title II grant funding. So this position would be completely funded through Title II funds and no cost out of the, no impact to the general fund. And Dr. Tui is here tonight, so if there's any questions regarding the funding piece, he can answer those questions. Just a couple more requirements. The supervisor would also be responsible for training all of the regular education teachers in order, for them to, teach them to identify the academic and behavioral struggles, to provide the tier one interventions, to train and supervise the intervention specialists, and I refer to the intervention specialist as our current teachers, who provide the academic support, the Title I services, our educational advancement teachers. They would be primarily responsible for those two, tier two and tier threes interventions. And also the special education eligibility teams, which would be comprised of child study team members and other building staff, so that they could collaborate with the regular education teachers to better provide interventions to our students. Now, you have the student who, at the beginning of the presentation, was laying with her head on the desk, and certainly can be more motivated. But our goals for RTI implementation, to increase the data-driven instruction, the targeted intervention, to provide clear interventions prior to child study team referrals, reduce the referrals district-wide, reduce the students requiring interventions after third grade, because primarily we are providing better, more effective, more impactful interventions in grades K through two. Our third graders and on should not need as many intervention services. Improving student learning and motivation and student attendance. Those students who are motivated and want to learn will come to school. Questions?
So the RTI supervisor will able oversee some of the special education teachers along with the academic support teachers?
They would not be supervising special education teachers, but they could be providing professional development and helping those teachers to understand the RTI process and collaborate with the regular education teachers.
So the RTI unit will be whose supervisor? AST?
The current academic support and educational advancement teachers. Those teachers do not have a supervisor at this, at this time, that, and this is a different position than the supervisor that was in charge of them, as I asked. This is evolving. Donna Kibler oversees that department now. She is not their, she's, not their director, administrator supervised that staff, but she holds the departmental meetings. Donna, I don't know if you want to add anything to that?
I do oversee those teachers, and I meet with them regularly, on special learning community days, and respond to any questions they have, any issues. I also coordinate their ordering and their assignments to their schools and reassignment when necessary, based on the numbers of students that they have to service. But I have overseen that program this year, and previously I've overseen it prior to Dr. Ferry. I volunteer to do this year.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the Personnel Committee, Dr. Hoker brought this up and talked through to our new vision of committee system. We met twice and talked about this topic, and I had sent out a memo briefly stating that, that Dr. Hoker would explain that. As a whole, the Personnel Committee was not in favor of providing new staff. We had put a hold on hiring new positions because we had added so many, and we have been, or the administration has been very good about not adding new positions, replacing some through retirement, through attrition, whatever. But what you didn't mention was, we, we did talk about the Board as a whole feeling about adding more top edge, more supervisory staff, and, and new positions. But what you did not provide was the part about staffing, the numbers of the staff. Why don't we know the exact number? There was something about coalescing classes?
Something like.
Or?
Well, we spoke about this process and how providing RTI and these specific interventions would eventually change how the staff is utilized. I'm not sure what you're.
Was it something about basic skills instructors?
I believe you said there was eight or nine down in the elementary room. I don't think we had at the high school, there was over 25 people at this super.
Oh, yes.
That's who keeps referring.
Oh, well, that's, that's, I'm sorry, you're saying the numbers, and that's what we were just saying, that this, this person would be responsible for supervising the educational advancement and academic support teachers. Is that what you were saying?
Oh, okay. But that was the, that was the other piece. No, it was something about some of the numbers that you would be able to rearrange staffing in some areas? Did I, Mr. Turp, at that?
I'm not, I'm not clear on which.
I think we talked about the leadership of the position. We may need to, we may be able to have less of the instructional staff in place that we took on this past few years, because we have a different delivery model. So with this supervisory piece, in addition to it being a title, funded through Title II, it is also a piece that might come out in Washington, that there'd be less, less classroom teachers in that place for that position.
Right, and those classroom teachers could be relied with another.
I was not clear on what you were asking, I'm sorry.
Well, again, one of the things that the Board has always, has always talked about is extra supervisors and additional staff. So when it becomes where it's something that's zero balance, one way or another, then some of the Board members might look at that as a little difficult, actually, in terms of whether or not they're going to be able to.
Now, our Code of Ethics little segment today deals with RTI, and we as a Board need to consider a request, number one, it's not going to cost the Board of Education or taxpayers nothing at this point, because it's going to be paid by the child fund. Number two, if the funds do dry up, I know that we made it very clear during the Personnel Committee, that we would need to start consolidating some other AST positions to fund this person, because obviously a leader's going to make things more efficient, they're going to set the tone and be able to get the best out of their people, so.
Not everybody, I'm sure that not everybody knows what an AST is, so.
Academic support teacher. Those are your old BSIP positions, and they just changed the terminology to AST. So I have no problems with it, because it's very important that we give the kids who need the extra support, someone who's picking out of the box, who's going to be, uh, someone who's going to produce intervention. As long as kind of two months create this position, all well and good, it's a 10-month position, so we're able to cut that out as well. And quite frankly, if it does dry up in two months, then we need to have fund by consolidation of other positions within the AST ranks. So in hindsight, I think this would be a good situation, and it goes right along with our Code of Ethics.
And Mr. Dunn, when we spoke about this at the Personnel meeting, you had asked about, what if, what if the following year those Title II funds are not available, and I, you know, our discussion was, I don't think we should not implement a program that could provide better resources and interventions for our students when we have the funding right now, just because down the road, we might not. Down the road, if we're presenting that this is so much more successful than what we have had in the past, then that's when we would have to make a determination as to whether we would continue with it. However, I did have the opportunity and spoke in more detail with Dr. Ferry, who had shared with me that, you know, there's, there's no indication that that funding would not be there in subsequent years. It's been there, and I think Dr. Ferry, who had indicated the last 10 years, it's been there, and it does, it does not seem like it would be going away.
No, I understand that, but we've had some, you know, very good experience with funding drying up when we lost councilors. We were told the same thing, we're never going to lose the money for councils, we're never going to lose money for councilors, and what happened? We had to pay for six additional councils, which I'm planning. But the fact is that these funds do dry up, depends on who's in Washington, who's dispersing the money, et cetera, et cetera. So I just want to make sure, if, if we feel that it's worthwhile, and I personally feel it is, I just want to make sure there's a plan in place that we can fund it, and if it means consolidating, if it's, you know, successful, that we need to find other avenues to maneuver to pay for this personnel.
And I think that's what prompted the conversation that Mrs. Andriani is, was referring to earlier, that when we spoke about it, we did talk about that, you know, these interventions will hopefully meet the needs of our students, the early interventions, so that later on, in the third, fourth, and fifth grade and beyond, we're not referring as many students, we're providing more interventions in the regular ed classroom, meeting more of our children's needs in the classroom, and that's where the staff could potentially be reassigned, because we don't need as many interventions in the upper grades. I think that's hit the hit.
And the other part of it, you know, with the goal of it being successful, it, it's a savings plan, because if you're not referring as many students to special needs, as you can see what the tuition costs for the average special needs student, that is really where our rates go up. Once they get referred and identified as special needs, that's where we have a greater expense. So if we can address their interventions as general education students. education students, it comes as a savings to the board and the faculty. And it may make, you know, at this point, it's a funded grant. So even if that funded grant was there, it may make it non-consequential anyway because we refer them as students to special education.
Just have a question on the Title II grant. If this position is implemented and funded through Title II, would be fully implemented, fully funded through Title II?
Correct.
Is there an expected increase in the grant? Or in the finance, at the finance meeting we were given a handout and it states that two teachers are currently funded through Title II A. Is this, what you talked about, would these teachers still be funded there?
No, it's going to be a substitution.
It's also going to be a substitution for the two teachers that you budgeted to be funded from Title II would go back to the general?
No, no, they, they will not be funded. They will not.
Right.
No.
It's more of a personnel, I think, right.
Oh, I'm just trying to understand the funding because I didn't think Title II is that big a grant.
No, but it's enough. There are three teachers in Title II. We're talking about a substitution.
A substitution.
And the other key piece of this is, you know, and it's one of my charges, is to work on the professional development for all staff. And I do believe that our regular education classroom teachers need more professional development in the areas of, in the area of intervention, as well as our paraprofessionals in providing the services to our students. And this position and coming from the Title II is ties into that professional development piece. And that they would be responsible, and I would certainly be working with them to have a plan in place to provide that professional development throughout the year next year. And it is something that all of our staff would benefit from.
Would this position also be planning for the extended full year program for these students?
No, I believe that's through the Special Ed Department. Are you talking, oh, you're talking about through Title I services?
Yes.
I suppose that's a possibility.
I'm just thinking, is this position more or less arising because you determined that the position that was cut three years ago, Director of, was called Basic Skills?
And encompass testing.
Right, yes.
And that position seems to have changed over the course of years. I think at one point it was a director, supervisor. I don't really believe that it's replacing that position. I think it's something completely different. Do I, does it include Title I services? Yes. And would this person be in charge of the staff that falls under Title I services? Yes. Supervising, that's where the academic support and the educational advancement piece comes in. And I do believe that they need a supervisor who can be there in the buildings and providing that continuous support. And that's the professional development piece. This is more, is a supervisory coaching position. And again, I think that this supervisor position, the person needs to be in the buildings. They need to be in the building, hands-on, monitoring not just the staff and what they're doing, but monitoring the students and helping guide the staff to look at the data and see what's working and how we can make adjustments to provide the best intervention.
And this year, that position has been, or those duties have been fulfilled by Donna?
Yes. And again, it's working. But could we do something more and provide something better through this program? I think so. And I don't think that you will see huge changes in year one. I think this is something that takes a couple of years to implement, to be, to embed it through the schools and get through all of the interventions. Will we be providing tier-three interventions in year one? Yes. But two years down the road, will we be doing a better job of that? Yes.
And I think that, and I don't think that Ms. Kibler would be upset if I said that this year with the achieving jersey goals, teaching jersey goals, and everything she's doing, that, it has stretched her a little thin with what she can do in that department. And I don't, you know, think that she's been allowed the time because of the constraints of being assistant superintendent curriculum and everything that entails with individualizing instruction for all the students that are served by those teachers. And being able to track the data individually, that we would be able to hopefully do with supervisory position. Would you say that that's correct, Donna?
I would say that that's correct. Once the position of Director of Basic Skills Testing was eliminated, the responsibilities were originally given to Dr. Chris Vitelli and myself, and in addition to our duties as directors. And we both over-stored those two positions. And then upon the elimination of Dr. Chris Vitelli's position, I took over all of it. And then Dr. Brennan came and he sort of took it over. And the program was floundering. And that's when I went to Mr. Sid Adito and I said, I would take it over and supervise it this year. Set me any changes to the foreseeable future until we could put a stronger intervention program in place.
Can I just ask a question? I just had a couple of questions. So bear with me because I saw some of the slides and some of the originals aren't, are there that I saw. So the RTI program, obviously which we know is basic skills and now academic support, is for elementary, this position?
This, well, yes, but when, again, this is a job description that has to be developed.
Okay, because that was actually my next question. It's because we did something in this district by reorganize without job descriptions. And now, no, and so now we're kind of paying that price because people are floundering and not really knowing who they report to, what they're required to do. So although supporting academic support, because it is an area that has been lacking for years, you know, curriculum, all of that stuff, is there a job description? And for the requirement for the person who's going to be applying, has that been discussed? Is it a special ed background? You know, because we have general supervisors out there too, so I just wasn't sure if it was specific.
The job description has not been developed. However, there's a draft that, you know, some collaboration has gone into, but without the board's approval, we wouldn't want to move forward with a job description. So it's something, I'm sorry.
We'd like to present the board with information of possibility. And we're, what's discussing with them, getting like a, I've told the board that I would not present them with information that they would have, new information, but they would have 30 days to look at the information, think about it, do some research, come back with it. So the goal is that at the April meeting, we would have a job description for them that they could, once having this information, having the time to adjust the research, and then approve a job description at the April order.
Okay. And so this position, would they be evaluating the academic support teachers?
Yes.
Yes.
So they would provide the evaluations for those teachers?
Correct. And it is a K to 12 position. I think that was the initial question.
Okay, because that's something else that's unique. You know, we are extremely large. Since the 2010 budget cuts, we've never put back a lot of the positions that were cut. And I think because of that, now with all the achieving jersey reforms and things like that, some areas have been impacted. So on the secondary level, you know, there's absent curriculum of basic skills. You know, it's sometimes non-existent. So that's an area, like in the 11th grade, that's a man, you know, everything else is mandated testing. Totally agree with early, you know, not referring every student down in the elementary. However, the secondary level, they need to pass those standardized tests in order to graduate. So we need to continue to provide academic support for those students because although the fourth and the eighth, and all these indicators are there, you know, the secondary piece you can't pass. So saying it's K to 12, I would hope that would be the commitment and also that the job description is viewable so we can see the trickle-down effect of what exactly it means.
Agreed. And I do think that in the job description and the qualifications, there needs to be a special education component, a background, as well as an English language arts and a mathematics. I think we need to find a very specific person to implement this program and monitor the K to 12 district.
Right. And if it works, that it's committed to because, you know, we had reading coaches and math coaches for a year and then they were taken out. We've never had those additional resources down in the elementary levels, you know. So if this is something moving forward, that it can't be something, you know, maybe he is tweaked or something, but, you know, pushed in, pulled out, you know, because it just then isn't effective.
Ma'am, I can tell you this, at the personnel meeting, when it was first approached by Dr. Hoco, I heard new position and my immediate response was no, absolutely no. When I heard supervisor, it was a double no, absolutely no. Dr. Hoco has passionately described to the personnel committee how her experiences in two different elementary schools and the great need. We do have focus schools, we do have struggling learners, and our special needs numbers are increasing. To Nicole, of course, back there, this is something, we have a new set of administrators. And they're really trying to be progressive with some and to create viable programs that would work with state mandates and help the district move forward for education for all of them. And as I, as I stated, my original response was no. We did ask for some keeping 10-month supervisors, we thought 12, certain about different duties that we had discussed. And we seemed to come up with something that was a viable, at least viable, something that we could bring to the board so that the individual members could then go on.
No, we would, we totally support anything that's going to improve destruction, you know. But like I said, there's still issues in the supervisory and administrative piece, you know, that have never really been addressed since the original cuts. So now we're putting in something new, which I think is a good thing. And I'm not opposed to adding more. I mean, the administration is less than what it was a few years ago. So that trickles down. My concern is just, you know, putting something else in new and then not having all the pieces and then I'm still dealing with those pieces from a few years ago. So totally support it, you know, and moving forward, knowing all the details and how it's going to impact everybody.
Well, and my other response to the call was going to be, you do have a new central administrator cabinet that is working, as you said, we're being progressive and we're looking at moving forward. And there are things that have happened in the past and there were cuts in the past. And, you know, we're not looking to go back and say we'll replace everything that was, every, every position that was gone because maybe now we don't need those positions. We need different positions. And we have to, we have to be able to move forward to provide and provide for the current needs of our students.
And again, to wrap it up, at least from my end of it, since coming on as superintendent and having, working with Donna and Kathleen and the whole leadership council, the one thing that we have heard is from the board is what you don't want. And we agree with you on many things that you brought up, you don't want. You don't want surprises. You don't want information coalescing, you don't want time to go on it. You don't want frivolous spending on things that aren't needed. But one thing you said you do want is you want the best and improved educational opportunities for all students. And that's why we're bringing this to you. Because we've looked at it, we've looked at what the districts are doing, and we firmly believe this is something needed to do that going forward.
Any questions?
Of course. Any comments from anybody from over there?
If you have any questions during the course of the next 30 days, if you want to bring up to us, play up to us, you know, we really value your feedback. So we'd be damn happy if we wanted you.
Okay. Thank you. Responding special community reports. I know you have some that we need reporting on next week. We have a podium in rounds, I know for sure. We have comments, of course, we have an update for. Anything else that I did not notice, please post to. Facilities use, we had a lively discussion about that last night. And at this point, we have an open time. Anybody in the audience, public, anything on the agenda?
Questions for the agenda?
Yes, ma'am. On the bill list, is the only thing we've got?
Oh, okay. So no.
Is that a yes or not?
Not for the bill list, no.
Okay, not for the bill list. Okay. We're up to 17 athletics. There are three motions on the agenda. One is the name. Have you got any discussion on the first two?
So, well, the only question is, will there be a name for the state?
Yeah.
But...
We're just betting that there will be one.
Curriculum has 13 items. Did you look at that? Have you had a discussion on anything in that area? Are we discussing anything? Apparently our Chinese guest instructor is extremely positive. Everybody seems to love him down at the elementary school.
I just had a question on number five. Can I ask that question on curriculum? Five, six, and seven? I just, I don't, on five, it says approve of following curriculum guidance to be written for payment, 10 hours. The same thing for six, and then seven says to rewrite. Revisions are usually 10 hours, but rewrites or overhauls are 20. So I just wasn't sure if they were rewrites or revisions or...
I believe they're just revisions, rewrites. It's the 10 hours. It's not the simple 20 hours.
So it's the revision?
It's a revision because we don't have, we're still operating under the New Jersey Core Curriculum Standards. And the LA curriculums that are really, you know, a total overhaul of where there's common core state standards or if they're ancient, it's a, you know, total revision. And we're just tweaking.
Can we change the language now?
Sure.
Go one word. Everyone that we got would be which one, numbers?
Number seven just says rewrite, which I would interpret as...
Number seven for rewrite, the 20, I guess.
Rewrite. This is, this is an AP course. This is just to align it to the AP standards in order for it to be recognized as for AP credit. It's not, you know, a whole rewrite. It's just to tweak it, to bring it in line.
Just revision just might be a term that, that just so it falls in with it.
To revise, okay.
Just to revise, just so that it's not confusing for the, for the collective bargaining agreement when it says revise. So this just won't be, you know, nobody will misconstrue that.
I'll change it to revise. Thank you. Don't know.
Number three, I need to give more information on number three. I received an email from this board.
She can copy the paper.
Not a lot more to set in general public session. If the board has specific questions, certainly we could have executive session discussion on it. But even in executive sessions, if you have other information, Mr. Turek can share a form.
I just want to finish this first before we go down. Well, inside, we're having a discussion up here. Inside the finance section, when we get down to numbers, number 11, it is intended budget. We did have a finance committee meeting last night, and it was open to the public. We didn't have an open session. We had some lively debate, and this seems to be what looks as if we'll be going forward for all. And with that, I guess we should have the bill list. So could I have a motion for the numbers on finance?
May I?
Thank you, Ms. Maudlin. Do I have a second?
I'll sit.
Thank you. It's the same. We have a discussion on those?
My questions were answered. I had some questions that we would answer.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Mr. Marcel, what was it?
No, no discussion. Orselli, Orselli? Yes. Breman?
Yes.
Yes. Hoffman?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Stine?
Yes.
Councilor?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
I think it's a typo under number 12.
Non-certificated personnel, so 20, 25, 10. Nothing under operational. Moving into non-certificated others. Seven items. Question on that? Page 12, certificate personnel. Retirement, resignation, everything. Certificate personnel, both in state 16. Number 17? Everybody? Any of the other numbers? Transportation, non-certificated personnel, transportation. Twenty-five, life equipment services. In expectation?
Miss Lance, number six. Hopefully that will go last a bit. Hopefully there's motion number thirteen. We all not? These spring storms, we're very concerned.
Okay, a question about our calendar while we're talking about it? Can I ask a question about the calendar? As I just noticed.
Not yet.
I can't?
Not yet. Yeah, so you could ask it.
Thanks. Did you ask the question?
Yeah, sure. Your question. Monday, June 23rd, a full day, half day? Monday, June 23rd is a half day. It is a half day. Last day of starting historically those days.
Okay, what secretary? All right, Mr. Marr, for those of you who just did not hear that, on page 20, which is number 28, board secretary of business, some of the major boards that we talked about during the trade are now on the board. Question?
Yes. On the board? On the board.
Anything? Only one, twenty? We need to move it.
Okay. Typically, it's not on the same day. I know that teachers that go do get a stipend, so will that mean they're getting paid for, thought there was a stipend or?
They get compensated.
They get compensated in some way. But I happen to be in a position this year where I have a graduating student and I am an employee. So how do we handle that?
We'll explore that. I'll be talking to the ODA about that possibilities for, as, as remember, when Dr. Brennan established that calendar, that, that in service day was there in lieu of teachers not accumulating their mandated hours outside of the regular school day. Each teacher has to do 20 hours beyond for completion of that.
Yes.
So that day was there for them if they didn't have those hours, because then they had to commit on that day. So that was something you left us with, we have to work towards it. And you put that character for the teachers that if they went outside the regular course of the, the school day, if they're workable and could complete their hours, they wouldn't have to commit on that day. So that's something we have to work with.
Paraprofessionals do not have to do the 20 hours that the teachers do, so that's something else that I guess would have to be discussed?
That's correct.
So should I save a personal day to go to my daughter's graduation or should?
I'll work with Michelle, you know, on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, do you have the same question?
Sorry?
Yes.
Yes, exactly. So we have the exact same situation, so.
Any else? Okay. We get another section, old business and new business? Any discussions, what happened on old business? All righty, new business, just a decree.
Yeah, I think we, hopefully we all got the same, we never have the coming blood and bone marrow drive and over family, lost a child and over, they're trying to, you know, help eliminate these, these health issues. The only reason I'm saying it now, since by the meeting it'll be over, is March 15th, which is, uh, eight AM to 2 PM at the Woodbridge Township Ambulance and Rescue Squad in Island. They're looking for blood and bone marrow donors. If anybody is interested. To the, uh, Luanne Silver family, organizing this, apparently the lost a young child in Oldbridge, and the parents are trying to, to, that was anyone?
If you know, without any, just, just tonight?
Yes.
Even though our relive for life event is in June, we have a kickoff.
Tomorrow night at 6:30 in the Oldbridge High School cafeteria, there's a kickoff event for the Relate for Life that'll take place in June. They're looking to, really looking to have this year's event be attended by most people possible to make it our most successful year. I have no doubt that it won't be, because we really have a great head start. We orchestrated it so it does not coincide this year with high school, the prom. That was a problem with past years because a lot of the students have to prom, we're unsure, and this is, was on the same weekend in the past few years. So it's been, it's been great. I'm working with a local establishment, Salsa Rita. And I've noticed by going on Twitter that the students love Salsa Rita for some reason. And I think it's good, I actually enjoy their food as well. And, was that? And so I asked the students if they retweeted or attend the event, that they have the opportunity to win a Salsa Rita gift card. And it was, I think altogether, it was over 20 and 25 each week so far. So it's reaching a lot of people and hopefully we'll have a lot of people at the event tomorrow night.
And Mr. Orselli, would you like to share your other Relate for Life event?
Well, we'd like to confirm that with the, the board council, with the town council, but it seems that the township council has challenged the Board of Ed to a charity softball game, which we hope to do during Relate for Life on that afternoon. So, so hopefully we'll, we'll, we'll bring that to Relate for Life as well. And that should certainly draw a lot of people there.
I don't know, that's nine against nine. That, that means nobody can get hurt.
No, no, I think it's something over the space.
I wanted to confirm with Rich first because he's, he's, he, okay.
As I told Mr. Marr the other day, I was, I was a three sewer person in where I grew up. Stickball, yeah. You know, the ball goes to the sewers, but those days are long over. Anybody else? This, uh, Ms. Kibler, yes?
Ms. Andrea, I'd just like to remind everyone that tomorrow night is kindergarten registration by appointment only. It'll all talk to our elementary schools. And Thursday night is parent university. And you are fortunately invited to attend, sign up for workshops onsite. We closed our online registration today so that we could get a good number for each session. We had to cancel any sessions or get additional sessions. So I welcome everyone. Ms. Dino will be doing a little presentation and have really some wonderful workshops going on. And I heard you're a refreshment, you know? Second child here. Thank you.
And just thank everyone, remember everyone who attended, members in the community who attended the multiple Read Across America events that are going on. It was great to see such a nice turnout from board members and members of the board as well.
And anyone that's here, thank you very much. We have the, the large BTA president councils on Brazil last Friday. Everybody seems to be having a good time. We had some people singing. A few dancers, a few singers, and, you know. And I, yeah, that would be me, and I don't know what button I hit on my phone, but. All right, with that, we're done?
With you? Yeah.
We're finished? That seems to, to, anybody else going, what seems too early? All right, then I need a, no, call session with you, correct? No, okay, do I need a motion to, second motion?
Don't make a motion to a juror.
Yes, do I have a second? Can I give this?